This is the Monday, February 22 meeting of the Auburn Board of Selectmen. This meeting is being recorded. Is there anybody in the audience recording this meeting also? Being none, may we stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are short one member tonight. Has anybody heard from him tonight? I haven't heard any calls or anything. He's had a couple of meetings before that we haven't heard from. I'm just hoping that all is well and there's no problem, so just to make a note that he isn't able to be here tonight, I guess. First off, there are no public comments. Nobody's signed up. And under public hearings tonight, we have a poll location hearing on South Street for 7:00, and we are ready to go. Is there a representative here?
May I make a motion to open the hearing?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay. We have a poll location hearing for South Street, and I will turn it over to our representative. And would you identify yourself and tell us a little bit about your project?
Yeah, hi, I'm Kelly Correa, Representative Ryson. And this is just part of National Grid's overall upgrades. Right now, there's an existing pole at the end of George Street. There's a guy wire from that. It goes across South Street into a tree, so we'd like to place a stub pole and remove the guy wire from the tree.
Okay. Is there any questions? Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. I just, in our packet, I'm not seeing any abutters or abutters notified?
As far as we know, yes. We sent in all the information.
Okay. Generally, in our packet, if they have them.
Yeah.
So we have received that the abutters have been notified? Chairman?
Okay, so we didn't have it in our packet, but the abutters have been notified also. Will that tree be removed? Or will there just be a pole put in place?
Just a pole in place. The tree won't be removed. It's huge. There's a huge tree.
All right. And it won't affect the height or anything of the guy wire that's on there right now? It's going to be maintained about the same as it is now through the tree?
Correct.
Okay. Are there any questions? Yes, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm just looking at the poll location. Is that a private property?
The pole itself will go within the town taking. There is a house there on that lot. The house is set way back off the road. And where that part of the road is on South Street, there's a banking, so it kind of goes up, and that's all a tree line right there, so you wouldn't even really, from the house, be able to notice the pole in between all the trees.
And, Mr. Chairman, the reason I ask is the last two that we had, you know, we had we had an abutis notification, we had some concerns, and they were able to work it out. I just, that's why I just want to be sure that that property owner was notified. If they were notified and they're not here, then I have no concerns.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Okay. There are no abutters here? No comments? Okay. The ball will entertain a motion to close the hearing, unless you have something else to add to us.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing. Second?
Okay. Motion been made, second, to close the hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the petition as requested. Second?
Okay. The motion been made, second, to approve the petition. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the school department. And would you be more comfortable coming up here? Would you like to stand there, whatever is good for you? Okay. What, there's the tree view?
You don't have a power, you don't have a power plane or anything, right? Yeah.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you. First, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board for hearing us this evening. I have with me Mr. Fahy, our Director of Facilities, and also Cecilia Worsbicky, Business Manager for the Auburn Schools. So as you received in your packet, we are here this evening to seek your approval of submitting an application to the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program. If you remember, it was just about two years ago, now that we came before you, we had at that time submitted for four projects. The roofs at Pakicaw Brinma in Swanson Road, the old Auburn Middle School, and a new roof at Swanson Road. Three of those projects were approved by MSBA. The roof at Brinma, the roof at Auburn Middle, Old Auburn Middle, Swanson Road, and the Boiler. Pakicaw's was not approved. We felt fortunate at the time to receive that approval, and if you recall, because of getting the 54.16% reimbursement, we actually saved the town approximately $1 million, which is great. The application for your consideration and approval tonight, which only commits you to actually saying, "We approve, we support the application being submitted." It does not approve the project going forward. What we would wait to do is hear from MSBA. If we were accepted, then it requires a second round of approvals from both the school committee and the Board of Selectmen, so we would be back to see you. We are not, just as we did with the three projects that are just finishing now, we would not seek any additional borrowing from the town. Instead, we would seek to do a reappropriation of funds that have been previously borrowed. In terms of an approximate cost, the Brinma roof, that cost is $578,000. The Swanson Road roof is $920,000. And the Pakicaw roof would be somewhere in between there, a little closer to the Brinma number. So we're estimating that it will cost approximately $750,000. Assuming the same reimbursement rate, that would have MSBA reimbursing us for $406,200 in the town's share being nearly $344,000. So we have identified funds in order to make this happen, and I believe this was also included in your packet. When we went for the approval of the current three projects, we sought transfer, and town meeting was approved of that, and you supported that as well. We actually had transfer slightly more money than we ended up needing, and that's because the bids came in lower, which was a good thing. So we would seek to use the $295,000 that's currently in account that's titled AMS Brinma Roof and Boiler. We anticipate through the reimbursement process for these three projects that we'll get approximately another $75,000. So that would bring the total in that account to about $370,000. That would more than account for what we would require for our share, being about $344,000. So at this point again, we're seeking your approval to submit the application. Now, if they don't accept it again, we would simply seek to do the projects that were originally designated for this, for these funds. But it is our hope that you would approve this, and if we're fortunate enough, we'll get invited in a second time.
Any questions? Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So can you give me the, you know, rough timeline on this, you know, submitting it, the response time, and then obviously we'd need to go to town meeting to have them approve this fund. So can you just give me the timeline on this?
Sure. Based on the, if everything was to mirror what happened two years ago, we received notification in early June. So we submitted it in February, received notification of our acceptance in early June, and then at that point, we needed to submit, there were sequential steps that we needed to follow. We needed to submit notification to MSBA of where we would get the actual funding. It wasn't until the fall special town meeting in October of 2014 where the transfers were made. We did do a couple of additional transfers in March of 2015, because that was before we had gotten the final bids in, and ultimately, we didn't need that additional money. And then, so, so we submitted in February. We should hear by June. We'd seek reappropriation at the fall special town meeting. Everything would work with an engineer and an architect, and then the work would be completed in the summer of 2017.
May I ask one more question?
Absolutely.
Thank you. So you said if we don't get approval, we'll just go back to what we were doing. So that kind of troubles me, like, if this work needs to be done, how do you deal with that? You know, what's the resolve for the issues that need to be addressed?
Sure. So in terms of, you know, the Pakicaw group, if there wasn't this opportunity to save 54%, $400,000 or thereabouts, the Pakicaw roof, I think Mr. Fahy would say, he continues to make repairs to it, you know, as needed. It's not, doesn't absolutely need to be done this year, but it's really the opportunity to save $400,000. We had put off some projects, and we reprioritized, and the bulk of those come from central office where we are located. So there aren't students in that building. It's really for energy management work, some replacement windows, and upgrading of bathrooms. So that is work that certainly could be done, needs to be done, but it is not as imperative, you know, as something in a school building. We just thought that taking care of a school and then ultimately having five, all five of our buildings with new or relatively new roofs kind of outweighed for the priority.
Great. Thank you so much with that additional information, and I feel I could support this tonight.
Okay. Now, the 54, just a little over 54% reimbursement, is that subject to change, or do we, I guess I'm being an optimist and saying, "Yeah, we could get a little bit more out of this." We, you know, I'm just kind of curious as to how we're working with that.
That actually, that's a rate set by MSBA based on factors that they use. So I'm making an estimate that it would be the same value, but we won't actually know that until we're actually accepted into the program.
Okay. And then, as far as the projects, about $750,000 total. And you're saying you're allowing for $75,000 depending upon the MSBA reimbursements. Is that $75,000 coming from the school budget?
No, that's money that through CIP, what happens, Mrs. Worsbicky submits as bills come in for the three projects currently ongoing. She pays the bills and then submits them to MSBA, and then they reimburse us. So those monies coming back would go into that account.
Okay. So that remains within the school department budget?
CIP.
The CIP, rather.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is there any other questions? Okay. Is there anything else you'd like to add?
Just that, assuming you approve, I hope that we will be accepted by MSBA, and if so, we will be back at some point, hopefully in June or July.
I know it was unfortunate, two weeks ago, we had a little bit of that white stuff on the ground.
We did.
So I just hope that doesn't affect your ability to apply at a certain timeline.
No, we actually, it was submitted electronically with the caveat that assuming you get approval tonight, we'll submit the minutes of this meeting. If not, then it will just be null and void, the application.
Okay. That'd be great. Anything else from here?
So do we make a motion at this point with the resolution?
Yes. And would you?
Yeah, I'm happy.
Please. And that has to be read directly into the.
Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to make a motion to approve the submission of the statement of interest to MSBA to replace the roof at Pakicaw School. Having resolved, having convened in an open meeting on February 22, 2016, prior to the closing date, the Town of Auburn Board of Selectmen, in accordance with its charter, bylaws, and ordinances, has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Buildings Authority the Statement of Interest Form dated February 4, 2016, for the Pakicaw Elementary School located at 110 Pakicaw Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Category 5, for replacement of the roof to increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs. The roof at Pakicaw Elementary School is approximately 30-plus years old. The type of roof is rubber asphalt membrane with stone, and in 1998, seam repairs were completed. And hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting this Statement of Interest Form, the Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of the application, the awarding, or the grant, or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, or commits the Town of Auburn to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion by the board? Has the school department got any further?
No.
Okay. No more comment. And Sharon, have you got that motion in front of you?
Yeah, I have the resolution.
Okay. Great. Okay. So I guess we're in pretty good shape. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you for coming in tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can, absolutely. Let's see. So I'd like to move up item 5C, Petition for Street Acceptance for Grandview.
Motion to move up item 5C.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And what we have in front of us tonight is Petition for Street Acceptance for Grandview. And in closing, we have a Citizens' Petition for the Acceptance of Grandview Street as a public way. I'll ask Mr. Coyle, DPW Director, to come up and explain a little bit about what the process is and where we are with it. Please.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this is actually a petition that came through as Citizens' Petition for Street Acceptance of Grandview Street. And when we did receive this, it's something that we'd been, that the DPW have looked at recently, and during our review process, realized that this is another roadway. This is what we usually refer to as the Murray Development in the back off of Fanniff Street. And most, all those roads, actually, all those roads have been accepted by the town. For whatever reason, Grandview Street was never accepted, but went through the subdivision process. There was a plan recorded as part of the subdivision, and this was built years ago, and I believe the plan was dated in June of 1963. So the roadway itself is approximately 1,090 feet. The road is in poor condition. I believe most people who live on the road probably unaware that it's technically still a private road. At this point, I think the next step in the process would be for the board to refer this to the planning board and the engineer's office for our review and comment. It is something that we have been looking at. We do feel it is probably something that we want to support.
Any comments from the board?
I'll just ask a question or comment. After the process, if, you know, assuming it goes through the process and the road is accepted, can you talk a little bit about what happens then? Because I think people think that, like, because the road has been accepted as a public way, it now, like, say, immediately gets paved or whatever. And I know you have a.
Right.
A long-term program. So if you can just address what happens, because, I mean, you can't, it has to be somewhere in the list, but if you can just talk about what happens.
Right, absolutely. Every year, we review and evaluate all our roads in town, especially, we drive every single road, but we look closely at what we rate the number one and number two. We evaluate them 1 through 5, 5 being relatively brand-new, 1 being in the worst condition. And we've made a huge amount of progress on doing the roadways that were in the worst condition. So Grandview is obviously in very poor condition, but I think in fairness to other people who've had their roadways accepted for several years and that are equally as poor condition, certainly, we would focus our efforts on reconstructing those roadways first before we would get to Grandview. So you're absolutely right. There's expectation, once it's accepted, the towns are going to now go and reconstruct it. And I think it's something that we have to look first to make sure that we've evaluated in any roadways that are as equally as bad or in worse condition, are completed first. So I don't want to give anyone the false hopes that now this is, if this gets accepted, that we're going to be in there a month later reconstructing it. It's probably not the case.
And that's why I asked the question. If I may, one more, Mr. Chairman. This includes that horrible section of Grandview that's like, you know, a giant pothole from edge to edge.
Yes.
But you've been, you've been kind of maintaining that and adding some fill, haven't you?
We, yes, we do. And we do maintain to an eliminate extent the, any of the, even the private roads, the town meeting members years ago approved the ability of the town to provide a cost, I believe, of $5 per linear foot of maintenance towards private streets. And it's typically whatever the existing roadway surface is, so we typically will repair it with in-kind materials. So if it's asphalt, we'll patch it with asphalt. If it's a gravel road, we'll grade it with either asphalt or grindings as well. So we do limited maintenance on some of these private roads, because we have to plow them. So we also don't want to ruin our plows as well.
And just one last question. So through this process, you'll continue what you've been doing, you know?
Absolutely.
Doing it, because I know it's very bad, and people have contacted you about it, and you've gone out there. So it will continue the way it is until it's, assuming it's accepted, and then it will fall into the process of being a town road, being evaluated, and when it will appear on the list for a long-term, you know?
Correct.
Long-term repair.
Correct.
Great. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Is anybody else got anything? It was interesting to see that through, going through the petition, there was, with all the petitions we have here, we only have a couple that were actually signed from people that were on Grandview, so they were, I don't know if they were really well aware of what the status was of this road.
Right.
And I was kind of expecting to see a little bit more support from the members of, or the residents of Grandview, that they can move and take a look at this. But it's in the process. I think it's a great thing to do, and I think, yeah, it's been there for a long time, and as Mrs. Goodrich mentioned, yeah, it has been maintained, but it is in pretty tough shape, so I think we should go forward and take a look at this, and I would support moving this myself. Is there any other comments? Have you got anything else?
I do not.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to forward the petition to the planning board for comments and to the town engineer for review.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Coyle.
Thank you very much.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll further make a motion to set a street layout hearing for Monday, March 28, 2015.
2016.
Sorry, 16.
Yep.
At 7:10. Does that work, Sharon? 7:10?
Yes, I don't think there's any other hearings right now, so.
I'll say 7:10.
Okay. Okay. Motion been made for 7:10 hearing. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. Okay. I would like to move up item 5D, Gift Acceptances.
So moved?
Taken.
Motion been made, second, to move up item 5D, Gift Acceptances. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. We have in front of us gift acceptances from, for the DPW Cemetery Division from the Home Depot, and I understand we have representatives from the Home Depot, as well as our.
Cemetery Division.
Cemetery, thank you. Wayne Blumquist. Yeah, and from Home Depot, we have manager Eric Sharon and assistant manager Keith Mativia. Welcome.
First of all, I'd like to thank the Home Depot people for working with us and donating many gifts and really helping us, the Town of Auburn. And I'd like to introduce Eric, and Keith is over there, the assistant manager.
Okay. Just for the public, Home Depot has donated cement garden blocks, approximately 650 blocks, that's six and a half pallets, valued at $1,261 for walls or foundations under the monuments. I guess I'll ask, you know, under the monuments, what monuments are we talking about? Because I know we've had Civil War monuments, we've had other monuments going on. Can you explain a little bit about what they are, Wayne?
That's the foundations we use, that sometimes is filler also.
Okay. Thank you. And then also, from the Home Depot, we have Pineback Nuggets, 156 bags, approximately $675.48, and that's landscaping in the new section. And I guess I'll ask about the new section that is deep into the back and.
In the spring, we'll probably be moving over to a new section, and there's a banking area that we're going to use them for landscaping.
Okay. Thank you. Now I'll turn it over to Home Depot, our representatives.
Wayne had offered for us to come down to the meeting tonight, because we haven't had a chance to come down. I've been in position now for a year and a half, and just wanted to let you know that we were here to help out in any way that we can. And that's about it.
I know that you had a previous assistant manager that you, that used to come down, his name was Mike McKell, and we, he actually moved to Florida, so we wanted to come down and make sure that the lines of communication was still open, and that we're here, and we want to help.
Well, this'll be great. This is going to be a great addition to the cemetery. I know that they have a lot of projects going on up there, and every little bit helps, and we do appreciate you coming forward with us. Is anything from the board? Any comments? Mrs. Goodrich.
You know, I'm a newspaper reader, so I see quite often little articles about how much Home Depot does within the community, whether it's small donations to, you know, an Eagle Scout doing a project, or big things like this. So just thank you for being involved in the community that you are cited in.
Thank you.
Just wanted to let you know, too, we have Team Depot projects where we go out throughout the community to try to help veterans, whether it be veterans or the school department. We try to do these small projects, which is 100% donated by our associates' time. So I am the Team Depot captain in the Auburn store, so if you do have such projects, you can actually pass those projects along to me. We do have the ability to do Team Depot grants from the Home Depot, so if you can get in contact with me, I'm sure we can work something out.
And you also, I was just reminded that you had done the dugouts at the Pappas.
Absolutely.
Complex also. You've come a long way from us, and we really appreciate all that you do for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anything else from the board? Okay. I'll take these one at a time. The first one is, let's see, from the Home Depot, the cement garden blocks to the DPW Cemetery Division.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept with gratitude.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Thank you. And also, the Pineback Nuggets, that's landscaping the new section for the DPW Cemetery Division. Is there a motion?
Once again, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept, once again, with gratitude.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And thank you both very, very much. Thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you for your time.
So we go back to our item 3, public hearings for the fiscal year '17 budget, and I'll turn this over to Ms. Jacobson and Mr. Gassanovich.
Through the chair, our CFO, Assistant Town Manager, and Gassanovich has a presentation to make, and in front of you, you will see a copy of the slides that he's going to be showing up on the screen. So if it's easier to look here than it is long distance over there.
Okay.
You can follow through this.
What are you trying to say? Can't see.
I don't have my glasses on. So I certainly can't.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and I'd like to acknowledge Kevin Kennedy, newest member of the Finance Committee, as well as the Chair, Kevin Hussey, for taking time out of their busy schedule to be here tonight. I appreciate that. Hopefully, this will be transmitted tonight to go to the Finance Committee for a meeting that will take place on Wednesday, and they'll commence their process Wednesday evening. I'm happy to report to you that we do have a balanced budget that we have presenting. It did come with some difficulties, and some hard decisions had to be made. I can tell you that what's driving this budget primarily is about 65 cents out of every dollar is going towards debt and interest and towards employee benefits, and I'll get into that a little bit as the presentation moves along. But we are recommending total appropriations of 60.9 million. Total revenue sources combined of local receipts of 8.5 million. Cherry Sheet revenue, that's the money we receive from the Commonwealth of Mass, 10.9 million. We are utilizing about 37.5 million of tax levy. Total debt exclusions outside of Prop Two and a Half, we're raising $2,822,920 and some change. And available funds of 1.2 million for total revenue of $60,964,889.20, leaving about $8,169 available, not committed at this time. By funding source on the revenue side, the total increase in local receipts from current year to FY17 is about $129,000, a 1.54% increase. Cherry Sheet revenue is up $484,000, a 4.63%. That's using the governor's budget numbers. Tax levy comprised of 2.5% as well as new growth will yield a 4.0% 4.06% increase or about 1.5 million. Debt exclusion is various sources is in some cases down $285,074, up $300,000 and up $58,000. Total available funds is down over current year by about 70,000. We're down 5.50%. On the whole, total revenue is up 2.2 million or 3.76%. On the appropriation side is up equal value, 2.2 million or 3.74%. Under the recommendation of 60.9 million, I'd like to go through the following bullets. I can tell you it meets all of our current contractual and step obligations. It provides for a set aside in the salary and reserve account to meet 10 of our union contracts that is going to expire on 6/30/16. We are currently in negotiations right now with all of the unions. It increases our departmental operating budget. These are all the departments excluding schools, an increase of 1.48% combined. School budget increase is up 2.10%. I can tell you the original budget was up 4.04%. They have amended it down since then. This budget calls for no new positions on general government side of the budget. It does call for seven full-time equivalent positions at the school department using their amended budget. Four would come out of general fund revenues. Three would come out of special revenue funds or our fees they receive for tuition. I can tell you that we currently have a budget gap or a difference between what they recommended and what the manager's recommendation or town administration recommendation is. There's a spread of about $158,000. This budget accounts for the newly created enterprise account for the golf course. It's banking on about $299,000 of expense as well as revenue. No general fund subsidy is required for FY17 for the capital or operational side of the budget. The FY17 budget also provides for funds for added interest for the New Auburn Middle School, Southhold Road, as well as the capital we went out and borrowed in September of 15. It meets all of our other debt and interest obligations. The budget also provides for increased costs and our recommendation to meet the solid waste and collection and disposal. This budget accounts for reduction on Bay Path assessment. We were notified probably beginning of February of a overall reduction of $89,094, which basically driving that reduction as a decline in our student enrollment. This budget also meets the required minimal contribution for library funding as required by MLC, which is a Massachusetts Library Commission. The employee benefit side became a challenge. The budget meets our retirement assessment given to us by Worcester Regional Retirement. It also provides for Medicare expense for all of our gross wages as well as a Medicare subsidy for a penalty we have to pay for those employees who are Medicare eligible and are 65 years of age and older. It also provides for an actual 11.80% increase in our group health insurance rates for the upcoming fiscal year. The budget provides once again for annual contribution of $500,000 to our OPEB liability. And it budgets $21,000 school-related expenses for an out-of-district placement for a vocational school student that has to go to evoke school other than Bay Path because they don't offer the vocational component that this individual is seeking. There may also be one other student eligible for that as well that could come at a cost of an additional $21,000 plus transportation costs. We haven't received confirmation on the other student yet. Like I said, this budget uses the governor's revenue for cherry sheet. We're also using the state cherry sheet charge as an assessment offsets that go along with that. This budget level funds the amount provided for abatements and exemptions at $450,000. Budget also provides for an outside article that comes before town meeting for school Medicare-related expenses, level funded at current year, funding at $110,000. It also provides for an amount of money we receive for the Auburn High School Gymnasium Trust. That's a $500,000 trust that yields a return every year. That return is used to help offset the cost of free use for the gym for our residents for community use. We also had a build into the budget for FY17 a cost to maintain Julia Bancroft and Mary D. School. That cost is level funded based upon estimates we receive from school facility director Joe Fahey. There is no current earmark in this budget for stabilization at this time. Hopefully, we can consider something for the fall town meeting. This slide shows the increase on by department. As you can see halfway down where it says total, total increase for all departments, not including schools, 202,148, 1.48% increase. As you can see, schools is at a 2.10% or a $489,000 increase to their budget over current fiscal year. All the other fixed costs, sewer enterprise, cherry sheet charges and expenses follow that. Total, a $2.198 million increase or 3.74%. So if we would break that out and show you what the budget consists of in terms of function of government in this pie chart, is a direct expense, education represents 41.13% of the total budget, followed by employee benefits at 15.73%. Public safety is at 11%. Debt interest is at 10.54%. Public Works is at 8.04%. General Government, 5.14%. Assessments, offsets, overlay, CIP, outside articles represents 4.58%. Solid Waste is a 1.61% representation of the budget. Human Services at 1.51%. And DIS, Inspection and Economic Services is at 0.74%. Total budget Now, if we take the amount of increase to the budget over fiscal year, which is almost $2.2 million, the increase is broken out in the following categories. So out of the $2.2 million, 34% or $853,370 is going towards debt and interest, followed by employee benefits at $747,329. That represents 30%. The school budget represents 19% of available dollars or $489,096. Departmental budgets, an increase of $204,202 or 8% of what's available. The capital budget, an increase of $54,039 or 2%. In sewer enterprise, a 1% increase of $14,348. And we have two reductions. Bay Path represents a 5% reduction of $89,094. In all other, which is other CIP articles as it compares to current year is down $75,984, a reduction of 3%. Here's the five-year capital plan. The detail is part of your, in your three-ring binder, but this is just a summary of how this is broken out for '17, '18, '19, '20, and '21. If you look at the bottom line, the amount funded through bond proceeds, you can see under FY17, we're funding our capital through bond proceeds is $722,000. In '18, '19, '20, and '21, you're seeing a decline. And that's a result of the 0.25 amount of tax levy that's going towards the capital program. So as you can see in FY21, we all but fund our capital needs through available funds and reducing our reliance on bond proceeds. So if we carry this out to FY2023, we should be able to fund all of our capital needs without borrowing money if we continue the course here. Here are the funding sources for FY17 on how we're going to fund our capital needs. On the revenue side of the budget, I went over this slide in the beginning of the presentation. This just shows you the change of increase from current year to FY17 with an overall 3.74% increase from current fiscal year, an increase of $2,198,893. Under tax levy, it raises $40,320,42989. It's broken out by raising $37,497,50923 within the levy limit. That's 2.5% on top of our base for current fiscal year. It also raises $2.8 million outside of the levy limit. And these were done through debt exclusion votes to fund the debt exclusion projects for Auburn High School and the New Middle School. Like I said, the budget uses for the first time in seven years, 2.5% of the total levy. Approximately 1.75% is going towards the operational budgets. 0.25% of Two and a Half goes towards our capital budget. And about a half of 1% is going towards a Bay Path project that was approved by the voters of this community, not as a debt exclusion. But since that vote, we've built that into the tax levy. It uses $475,000 of projected new growth. That has been conservative. If you look at the five-year history, the five-year history will tell you that we've been getting about $636,000. We're hoping the conservative approach will yield us some additional revenue that will allow us some financial flexibility in addressing some of the other needs, maybe addressing an earmark for stabilization or peeling back a portion of Two and a Half. Here's a listing of the available funds. For the most part, it's pretty level with what we estimated for FY16. I can tell you that this is one area that may change going into the fall town meeting when we realize what our actual receipts are through June 30th of the current fiscal year. On the cherry sheet state aid, we recognize an increase of roughly $480,000 made up of the governor's proposed budget, an increase of unrestricted local aid of 4.3%. That would yield right now for Auburn $67,887. We also had a Chapter 70 increase of $344,576. These are our estimated local receipts. The only thing that really changes this over current fiscal year is the amount that is earmarked for the Packer Shaw Golf Course. As you recall, we had a sort of a six-month budget. We used $121,000 of revenue. FY17 takes into consideration a full year of receipts at Packer Shaw. We're estimating that to be $300,000. So total revenue through local receipts is 8.35 million or up 1.54%. Now, if we look at our revenue of $60 million, almost $61 million, and break this out in a pie chart, 61.51% of all revenue is coming through tax levy, followed by cherry sheet state aid at roughly 18%. Local receipts at roughly 13.93 or 14%. Available funds at $2.8 million or 4.63%, with the debt exclusion, high school, middle school at 1.2 or 1.98%. So, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, I'm happy to close this out by saying we do have a balanced budget at this time. We do have an unobligated amount of $8,100. That could change very quickly if, you know, something should pop on the expense side. Conversely, it could also change if we see, receive some additional new growth. That won't be known till roughly August or September. That's, we won't know beforehand. And depending on the outcome of the state budget as well. With that, we are asking you tonight to take a vote to transmit this to the Finance Committee in accordance with Chapter 6.02 of Chapter 6, in accordance with the Charter.
Okay. Other questions? Excuse me. Mr. Carpenter.
Not a question. I was just going to make a motion to transmit it to the Finance Committee unless others have questions.
I'll second it. We can ask questions.
Okay. Motion been made, seconded. Is there any questions, comments?
Please, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Goodrich.
Just first, I'll make my comment. Recognizing the capital needs plan and, you know, the decreased need for borrowing for capital projects, you know, I'll just say that that's part of the financial policies that we adopted. And clearly, over the last several years, these financial policies that we've adopted and continue to adopt continue to benefit the town and us here at Budget Time. So thank you. And thank you for this budget presentation. I just have two quick questions on the presentation. The reserve that's up 80%, I assume that's reserved for the contract negotiations we're in with the 10 unions?
Yes. The salary and wage reserve account reflects a consideration for those 10 bargaining groups.
Thank you. And just one other. The, it's on page three, where it says 2017 budget recommendations. Just can you talk a little bit about the school committee's amended budget and the difference of the 158,887?
Okay, the original budget we received from the school department, I don't, I don't have that, if I can have that sheet. I can tell you it's up 4.04% or about $900,000. We met with Dr. Brunel and Cecilia, had discussions about the budget and looked at areas within the budget that could help reduce that request. They went back to the school committee and reconsidered their budget and actually brought that down to, and I have that noted in your three-ring binder in yellow. Is that at the bottom, Sharon?
So you don't have to get into a lot of the detail. I guess my question is, we worked this issue out. We're comfortable with where we're at. We have a balanced budget and we won't be looking for the additional 158,887?
I can't tell you right now that there wouldn't be future consideration for any department. It all depends on the outcome of both revenue, expense, and quite honestly, the deliberations that take place before the Finance Committee. Where at Two and a Half, there is no, there is going to be no attempt Where at two-and-a-half, there is no, there is going to be no attempt to go beyond two-and-a-half in terms of opposition. If anything, we would be looking to reduce that if we could, if some additional revenue began to fall.
Great, thank you so much. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Are there any further questions? Being none, a long-term motion to transmit to the Finance Committee.
I made the motion, Mr. Chairman.
And it's been seconded, and you have that. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And, you know what, I would like to move up item six-F, if I may, for the budget schedule. So with...
It's all moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay, so can we go through the budget timeline, please? We just moved that item up on the agenda so that we could just have that budget timeline and...
So, I think one of our objectives was to get the budget to the Board of Selectmen earlier so it would give you an opportunity to review it, look it over, digest it, ask any questions. And I want to thank you, members, for asking some questions during the course of the last two weeks. Given that, we're right on time in terms of us submitting it to the Finance Committee. I think, given the reorganization, it makes their job much easier when they have to do their deliberations because before, when we had, before the Charter, there were many more departments, it was much more time-consuming. Now, one department is responsible for a number of divisions in their department. It makes it much more efficient and much more, I think, easy to deal with when, before the Finance Committee. We're also asking that you open up the warrant tonight as well, to give boards and committees ample opportunity to consider submitting anything they may have. So we're going to leave that open for a longer period of time than normal. So, the word is already out there, and I think the Finance Committee is anxious to go. We are meeting Wednesday, and we will start the process seven o'clock Wednesday evening.
Okay. Is there any questions by the board? It sounds like it's going to be an interesting budget season. We have a lot of questions, a lot of things going forward, so, and you've worked well with the town department heads in the past, and to bring a budget to us that is well-done. And we look forward to working with the Finance Committee and see exactly where they go and how it comes up. And we have town meeting in May, so let's see where we go, and we thank you very much for your efforts.
If I could just make one additional comment, just a concern we have, that we all have. Certainly, the rise in health care cost is alarming. It became very difficult to deal with. It is absorbing a large chunk of what is available. We are currently before the Insurance Advisory Committee dealing with these issues. This is something we believe it's not going to go away. The cost of prescription drugs is really driving this increase. We don't see any relief in the near future. It may change as a result of the outcome of the presidential election, but we believe we're going to be faced with the same situation next year. So whatever savings we realize by working with the unions, with the Insurance Advisory Committee, we're hoping to reserve some of that savings and not use it for operational expense because we'd have to go back to them again because we have to have a three-year plan in place to deal with the rising cost of employee benefits and health insurance. So that's something that we're grappling with now, where with, you know, we're appreciative of the cooperation and the participation of both the unions as well as the representation and Insurance Advisory Committee. It's not an easy thing to take back to the employees. It's tough, and given the limited growth that we're allowed to consider on the COLA side, it makes it that much more difficult when it hits them on the other side as well. So I just want to just let you be aware that we're working diligently to deal with these rising costs.
If I may, I know that in past town meetings, you've come forward and sounded very optimistic, and we were looking very, very good, but you always had a caution statement that, you know what, as good as we look, we have to look beyond that. And you've been able to do that, and I don't think it's, well, I think it's settled in a little bit more than you expected, and we've been able to work with it. So hopefully, the budget process goes through smoothly so we can get that looked at and taken care of, so we can come back with a balanced budget and we keep our services and keep the quality of life in the town.
Well, just to put it into perspective, when we first kicked off the budget, we had a rate of increase of four percent, and that was based on a five-year trend that we were, that was really driving that number. Shortly after we kicked off the budget, our financial consultants or healthcare consultants came back and said, "Just want to let you know, the rates are trending at six or seven percent." So we thought we were still in the ballpark, and then shortly after that, maybe a month after that, they came back and said it's trending more at nine or 10 percent. And the shoe rarely fell when they came back and said it could be eleven or 12 percent. And it came in at eleven-point-eight percent.
Tentative.
Yeah, tentative. So that's where we are. We believe that we have a, we have that covered at this point in time. That can change very quickly, so when I told you things can change overnight, they literally can, not only on the expense side but on the revenue side. So we have a lot of things to watch. We will update you as soon as information becomes available to us. I can tell you, state revenue picture probably is not going to change till after town meeting. The local receipt side is not going to change till after town meeting. Tax levy situation is not going to change unless future funds become available that allows us to free up some of that two-and-a-half. On the expense side, we have health insurance costs. There's a known with Worcester Regional Retirement, there's a known with Bay Path, unless the transportation cost of state aid changes that number. And this outside placement for vocational could have an impact on the budget. That's not built in right now, so we'll keep an eye on things and let you know as things...
Perfect. With your guidance and direction, I think the Finance Committee will have a little bit smoother road. As rough as it's going to be, it'll be a little bit smoother, and we wish them luck with their budget season. Thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to Communications.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a motion to move up an item?
Yes.
See that the chairman of the reuse committee is here, so I make a motion to move up Agenda Item Town Manager, six-G.
Okay. Motion remains seconded, move up item six-G. That's the update on Mary D. Stone, Julia Bancroft Schools Reuse Committee. Ms. Jacobson, please.
Thank you. When we originally put this item on the agenda, it was just to let the board know that we had requested that the Advisory Committee, Elementary School Reuse Advisory Committee, have a meeting this evening at five-thirty to discuss some of our financial findings, architectural findings, engineering findings, and code findings on Mary D. School, as well as some of the financial challenges that we foresee with converting Mary D. potentially to municipal use, whether it be office training or storage space. So we had asked the committee to get together. We wanted to present to them what some of our findings had been, and in particular, we were trying to move it along quickly because now that we're getting through the budget process, we realize that we really don't have the financial ability to take on a major rehab of the Mary D. Building right now. We didn't want to make that decision until we got to this point. We needed to get through all of the capital, we needed to get through the budget, we needed to get our health care costs. And as Ed said, when that came in the other day at eleven-point-eight for the health care, that solidified the decision that we had been concerned with, and we wanted to go back to the committee and present to them everything and have some dialogue with them. We were not prepared to come in tonight and make a recommendation because we didn't want to put any pressure on the committee to make a recommendation. You know, we wanted to give them the information. We explained to them if they wanted to get back together a second time or a third time, you know, we'll wait for their recommendation, but we'd like to see where they're leaning. The committee and the chair, Kevin Kennedy, is here this evening, and Kevin Hussey is also on the committee. And at the committee meeting this evening, the committee voted unanimously to make a recommendation to town administration that we put both the Julia Bancroft and the Mary D. Stone schools out to bid for residential use, fifty-five and over, and/or senior housing. And I say and/or because one building may be more conducive to fifty-five and over than the other building. But they would like us to put together an RFP, and that would be a priority for the use in the RFP. So we wanted to come into the board with a formal recommendation. We, you know, this happened rather suddenly, so I'm just sharing with you what the committee's recommendation is. We concur with that recommendation. We think it's wise, given all of the factors. Mrs. Brotherton is also on the committee and was there this evening, as well as your representative. We discussed the fact that we thought it was great when the committee came back with a recommendation to use Mary D. Stone for administrative uses for the town. We are clearly out of space here. We have some operational needs that are not being met. We have training needs. You've all seen what happens when we have more than two meetings going on here at once. We've actually had to shift people, cancel meetings. It's been a challenge. But that being said, given the financial situation that we are now facing, our need to just be cautious and not make any large-scale decisions, not to increase our debt service ratio any higher than it's at until we start seeing some of that debt coming down, we didn't feel it was appropriate at this time for us to make a recommendation to put several hundred thousand dollars into the Mary D. Stone School. That being said, we still have some concerns, and we'll be honest, the committee, as well as town administration, we recognize that both of these are neighborhoods, and we want to preserve the integrity of the neighborhoods, and we want to make sure that the impacts on the neighborhoods and the residents of those neighborhoods is minimized. So it is felt and agreed upon by the committee, and Ed and myself, as well as Bill Coyle was in attendance, and Matt Benoit, that the best route would be to look at residential use of those properties. We talked a little bit about leasing, we talked about the carrying costs. Even if we could have identified the funding to come in and make a recommendation that we keep the Mary D. Stone School, there's still a carrying cost. So right now, we're carrying it, as Ed just told you, forty-six thousand dollars for both buildings, empty. And that does not include the increased insurance. And Ed mentioned this evening that he's, to the committee, that he is concerned that the insurance company may not even allow us to extend that insurance for an unused building. Or if we do, the premium will go up. So the carrying cost would be ongoing, it would come out of the operational budget. We were hoping that maybe through the, looking at the capital, we'd be able to identify some potential funding sources. We've checked with our bond council, we've checked with our financial advisors to see what funds we could use and how we could shift them. And right now, there's really no opportunity to do that. So formally, we can come into the board at your next meeting and just let you know that that's what we would like to proceed in doing, is to work with town council to get those RFPs both in place. The feeling is, let's put the RFPs out there and see what type of response we get, and let's try to see what type of value we get. Excuse me. We don't know what those properties are worth on the market and what revenues may come into the town. On the, another piece that we discussed was, we still do have needs here in Town Hall. So if we're not using the Mary D. School, what do we do? So internally, we've been looking at really rough estimates of what would happen if we were to put an addition onto this building? And what would that cost be? And would it be more or less than the cost of maintaining Mary D. and renovating it to bring it up to code? And at this point, Mr. Chairman, you were at the meeting tonight too, you attended it, and the discussion is that we could probably put an addition on Town Hall for far less than we could renovate Mary D. and also maintain the ongoing operations probably better. Again, this is not something we're prepared to make a recommendation to do, certainly not in the next couple of years. We would still have to look at the funding sources for that, but it is a less expensive option than the Mary D. option.
And the, if I may, the RFP that they had discussed tonight and voted on, you, they, Julie and Ed are going to draft up the RFP, but it then goes back to that committee to let them take a look at it and be sure that they are in line with what the committee wishes to do before anything is done. But that's in the plans also, to be sure that, you know, the committee does get it back so that they can take a look at it, review it, and fine-tune it, and then it can go to council for the legal rubbage.
I think, if I may, also, one critical piece of that discussion is, the committee had recommended that we retain the fields, the playground field that is out behind the Mary D. property and behind Town Hall, and we concur with that. We believe that we could put the Mary D. Stone building out to bid for some type of a housing development, and there would still be enough parking on the existing surfaces and on the existing property to support conversion to residential use. So if and when we get to that point, we would be going to the planning board for an A and R to, actually, it's interesting, but this is all one parcel. So for those of you who are on the committee, Mrs. Brotherton, and those in the audience that are on the committee, the chair, this is all one parcel, Mary D., the playground, and Town Hall. So if we were to sell Mary D., you would have to go and get an A and R just to split that piece off. And we believe that we could keep the field there for public use. We could put some type of retaining or some type of wall to make sure that there was definitely a block so the children wouldn't be running into the parking lot of another facility, and potentially to access that field through maybe a staircase that would go off behind Town Hall, right down into the field. The neighbors like that field, they use it a lot. It's used for soccer and softball.
Soccer, soccer.
Soccer and softball, and just the neighbors. You see a lot of people back there playing with their children on the nice weather. So we absolutely concur with that recommendation as well. And the other, and jump in, Kevin, if I'm missing anything, Mr. Chairman, but I believe the other component of this is the committee would really like to see the facades of both of those buildings retained. Again, it's in keeping with the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood, don't want to have too much of a visual change to that, we want to keep it aesthetically pleasing. So all of those components could be part of an RFP that we would put out. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
So that's where we're at, and we can come back with a formal recommendation to you, but we'll tell you, we were in concurrence. It was a great meeting, a lot of good discussion, and we're going to proceed on that.
Great, thank you. Okay, next we have communication. It's from the Massachusetts State Lottery Commission, installation of a Keno monitor at the Cane Shell Food Mart, three-eighty Southridge Street. We have a letter in front of us, and we don't need to take any action on that tonight, but if there is a comment, a question on it, Mrs. Goodrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know I have a lot to say tonight, but there it is again. So generally, I don't have an issue with these, but before I make my comment, I just want to confirm, this is the Shell station right near the mall?
Yes, across from the mall, yes.
So generally, I don't have an issue with this, and I'm not saying that I will have an issue with it. I'd like to hold, you know, keep this open, and we have twenty-one days to respond. I'd like to get some input from Inspeccional Services and Public Safety. That is a really busy gas station with entrances and exits on Southridge Street and Swanson Road. The idea of having the Keno monitors is to keep people playing longer, spending more money, which there in turn, people would be parked longer. My concern is that it's such a busy place, you know, are there any concerns for parking, for safety? And also, are there any outstanding licenses that would allow for setup, say for the sunglasses guy or the chic guy? Because it's a small lot, I just want to be sure that we have enough parking there if people do stay longer than they normally would for, you know, running in and buying a pack of cigarettes or something. And just, I'd like to hear from Inspeccional Services and the Police Department if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you bring about a good point because I go by there many times. People are lined up for gas, they're lined up for their coffee and newspaper in the morning, and just have this a little bit more, that's a good point, and I think it'd be well worth it to look into, but I will ask the board.
It's fine by me. Thank you for bringing it up.
I have no problems with it.
If we could continue this to our next meeting, just ask town administration to ask... to ask Inspeccional Services and both Public Safety, Police, and Fire, if they have any concerns with any additional draft. You know, I'm not sure, I'm sure town administration can explain it, my thoughts that, you know, the idea of a Keno monitoring system is to keep people playing, so it's not, no longer an in-and-out business. You may have people staying longer.
Very good. Would you make that in form of a motion?
Yeah, so.
Me?
Excuse me. Can I just ask one question? Yeah, we're just looking at the calendar. I believe if your next meeting is March 14th, you'll be past the 21-day period. This came in on, they mailed it on the 11th. We received it on the 16th, which is just the other day. So you might want to maybe consider a conditional vote, because you won't be here unless you meet next Monday night. You won't be here to take a vote to oppose this within the 21-day period.
Is that something we can do? Can we put conditions on that after we check to see?
I'm just trying to think it through. You could potentially take a vote that you were, you're not opposed to it unless you receive concerns back from the Police Department or DDIS. You don't have to do anything with the state if you're not opposed. You don't need to do anything.
Right.
But if you are opposed, you need to let them know on rating 21 days.
Okay.
So you would have to have that done prior to your next meeting. So that's why I'm just trying to think through if you took a conditional vote.
So I think I could make a different motion, if you'd like. So make a motion that, that the board not exercise any objections unless we hear back from Public Safety or Inspeccional Services with concerns. If that occurs, I make, you know, I further my motion to draft a letter to General Counsel with the concerns addressed by, in our feedback. Does that, do you want to follow that?
Mm-hmm.
Chairman, were you able to get that?
I guess I'm, I'm still, if we don't have a meeting before the 21 days are up, can, I don't know, can we still have those conditions put against that, even if we exceed the 21 I think you bring about a good point, Mr. Goodrich, that, yeah, it definitely would be more congestion down there, and I think this is definitely worth our while to take a look into. So I want to be sure that we can, you know, if we do delay this, that we can still do it without getting into, you know, a mess.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. What's the date we have to, have the letter to them by?
The date, you have to get a letter, the 21st day would be March 8th, from the date of receipt, which was February 16th. So you'd have until March 8th, and Ed just had a suggestion that we could send it to DCG, which is on March?
Second.
Second, because then you'd get the input of all of the departments on this, and then get back to you and still have time to send a letter, if you took a conditional vote tonight to do so, if there were any concerns raised by the DCG or by town administration.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just feel that if we have any, you know, I think that this is important enough for a small site like that, if, if there are any concerns raised at DCG, we, we not waive our opportunity to object. And again, I want to be very clear, I'm not objecting to it. I would just like to have some feedback from professionals and their thoughts on this. It's a very, very busy location.
No, I, I'm agreeing. I think, I think you can do that with the motion that you just made and still make that timeline, because we could send it to DCG and get the input of all of the town departments.
And the chairman could sign the letter on behalf of the board?
Yeah, it doesn't say that a vote needs to be taken. It's just, obviously, you are a board, and you're not voting as an individual. So I think if the board made that motion, the Chair could then sign the letter. We could prepare the letter. The Chair could sign it.
Okay. I guess what I'll do is I'll ask for the motion, so we understand what we have in front of us.
Motion that the Board of Selectmen not exercise an objection unless we hear from Public Safety or Inspeccional Services that there are concerns, and if that occurs, draft a letter to the General Counsel expressing the concerns as listed.
I'll just say, rather than in the motion, Inspeccional Services or Public Safety, where we're having it, you can just write DCG instead of that, because DCG is meeting. We were just informed. And that way, it doesn't limit it just to comments from Inspeccional Services or Public Safety. It's comments from DCG. And I appreciate this.
Any other comments? So motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah. So motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And thank you. Okay. Next, we have, the annual town meeting is May 3rd, 2016, and we want to open the warrant for that annual town meeting. Will you entertain a motion to open the warrant?
Make a motion, we open the warrant for the May 3rd, 2016 annual town meeting.
Second.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded for the opening of the warrant. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Now, we have the vote to close the warrant on Monday, March 7th, 2016, at 4:00 in the afternoon. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we close the warrant on March 7th, 2016, at 4:00 P.M.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those, any other questions or comments? I guess I just want to be sure that March 7th is going to give you suitable time for, to collect all the warrant articles.
Through the Chair, we normally open the warrant for one week, but we've extended it for two weeks, and we've also reached out to all the boards and commissions to notify them that this was on the agenda this evening and that those would be the dates. So it actually provides an extra week, and it's actually a week or two early, earlier than we normally do it.
Very good. So the motion's been made and seconded to close the warrant on Monday, March 7th, 2016, at 4:00. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Now, in front of us, we have a drainlayer's license. Mr. Gary Pike Construction from Auburn enclosed the application as approved by the vote of the Board at the January 25th meeting, and that vote taken was for a shortened version of the application.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the drainlayer license to Gary Pike Construction.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any questions, comments? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay. Now, we move down to 5E proclamations we have known tonight. Town manager items. First one, we have update on our community compact. Ms. Jacobson?
Through the Chair, this is really for the purpose of the residents knowing this, because I know all the members of the board, we notified them last week, and many of you were able to attend, but we're happy to announce that we did receive approval from the state for our community compact application that we submitted in early December, and that was for three so-called best practices. One is to prepare an economic development plan, one is to prepare a housing plan, both of which are major components of the master plan update process. So that should help us with that process that's now underway. And the third component was an early childhood education initiative to try to reach out to some of the daycare providers and homeschooling locations to make sure that there's a plan in place to prepare the children for going into kindergarten when they go to school. So we did receive approval for all three of those, and the Lieutenant Governor was here last Tuesday to sign the compact, and it was an exciting event. Nice to have the Lieutenant Governor come, and we're excited to hear more about what the details are of the technical and/or financial assistance. We don't know that answer yet, but we're assuming it's going to be some combination of some small grant money, perhaps to work with one of the local planning organizations to help start this, as well as technical assistance. It's my understanding we have 18 to 24 months to complete this best practice, so this will be a focus for the next couple of years until we get it done, but it's a perfect tie-in with the master plan, and it should help the master plan committee. They'll be engaged and involved in it, but at least they won't be taking all this on, on their own normal town administration.
Well, as I made a comment there at the, at the signing, that some of the economic development practices and some of the housing, we've already started to look into, so this is definitely going to supplement and enhance what we've already put in place by Julie and her team, and I think it's going to be a plus for us. So it'll be interesting to see how the state receives it and what kind of help we do get from them, and the master plan committee is going to be definitely benefited by it. So we look forward to that.
Thank you.
The next, we have information technology grant.
Yes, this ties into the community compact. So as an applicant, not even as now we're, we've been approved, but as an applicant, the state has made available $2 million to compact community applicants to apply for an information technology grant. So we knew a couple of weeks ago when they announced it that we were eligible to apply. So we started to have some internal meetings to try to identify what our highest information technology priority is that qualifies for the grant. And it's got to be something that benefits the community as well as operations, but again, it needs to be something that enhances the benefit to the community. So we have identified at this point, we'd like to install additional security cameras. As you know, we did, through a grant, install security cameras in many of our town buildings. We would like to install these cameras in some of our parks and enhance the cameras in some of the existing buildings, because we weren't able to, to put as many as we wanted to put at the time because of the cost. So we're in the process of getting a cost from Lantel, which was on the state bid list. They did the initial camera work for us here. And those cameras would then be tied back into dispatch, which would be able to look at the screen, you know, as needed, to watch, to watch some of these things. And then it does have a tape that I believe stays for a certain period of time. Right now, the grant is due this Friday, and we're, you know, we had about two weeks to pull this together, so we're waiting to get our final numbers from Lantel as to how much we're going to apply for. We figured maybe somewhere in the range of 30,000 to 40,000 or less would be reasonable. There's only 2 million for, you know, 200 communities that are probably going to be looking at this money. So we're, we would like to apply for it by the end of the week. We didn't have the figures for you yet, but your next meeting would be too late. So we'd like to ask tonight if you would support our application for the IT in an amount to be determined by the end of the week, and I don't believe we need, need to have the Board of Selectmen vote at this point, but we wanted to bring your attention, get the vote if possible, because we do need it when we finally get the grant.
Well, that was going to be my question, because I know that any other grants we had come forward, we had to have, you know, approve the application, and I want to be sure, so I think it wouldn't hurt for us to go forward and support this.
Right. Through the Chair, the majority of the, every grant has to be approved for us to accept and expend the funds, and many of them do require a board vote to actually apply. So we just like to cover ourselves and get that vote anyway. So yes, we would like to have that vote. And I apologize, we don't have the final specifics. Hopefully, hopefully, we'll have them by tomorrow on Wednesday, because we've got to get this thing done and submitted by Friday.
Yes. Mr. Capada?
I'll just make a motion that we approve the application and the expense of the funds, fill in the number, hopefully, the bigger the better, for the information technology grant program.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Thank you. Now, we have update on grants. Ms. Jacobson?
Through the Chair, just wanted to bring you up to date on a couple of grants that we've received in. The MEMA reimbursement for the January 2015 Blizzard, we had already received, as Mr. Kozinov just reminded me, we did receive the FEMA reimbursement, which is about $90,000 for that, and that's a 75%. And the state reimbursement is at a smaller percent of eligible costs, and that comes to $6,085. So we were approved and will be receiving that $6,085. The second one is, we have applied for, but it's not, I don't believe we need to have a vote, but if we want to take a vote, it would probably be helpful just for the record, but when we put in our initial grant for the energy manager position, that was a two-year grant, so we already got approval to put that in. The second year of that grant is now coming up, and that dollar amount, actually, we heard the other day after we prepared this, that the amount would be $12,600 for the second year of the part-time energy manager. So I think it would be appropriate for the board to vote to apply for and accept the funds for the second year grant of $12,600. Again, we're probably covered by the first vote, because it's all tied into the same application, but just in case.
Okay, so it's $12,600, not just 12,000?
Correct.
That's what we have in front of us, 12,000.
Correct. And then the state got back to us the other day and said that our allocation would likely be $12,600. So I'd rather go on the high, and then if it comes in at the 12.
Absolutely. Is there a motion?
A motion that we approve the application for the part-time energy manager grant in the amount of $12,600, and that we authorize the expense or the expenditure of that fund, of those funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comment? All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
And then lastly, this is just an informational, as you know, I'm on the Homeland, Central Mass. Homeland, Regional Homeland Security Council, and through that, for about a year now, we've been working and applying to receive a $40,000 grant for the region for the purchase of four large portable heaters and trailers. The impetus for this was the Blizzard last year in January. If you recall, we had quite a few pipes, burst in some water damage at the Police Department. When that happened, we had to scramble. It was a Friday night. It was around 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock. We were looking for portable heaters so that we could keep the, the jail cells downstairs operating, and we could keep the dispatch operating. We actually had to bring in a portable dispatch at the time. The closest portable heater that we could find available to us was in Salem, and the store was not open until Saturday, so it, it brought it to all of our attention. And after we checked with all the communities in the, in the region, nobody had these large industrial-sized portable heaters to keep a building going. So in an emergency, whether it be a school, a fire station, a police station, you need to have these. So we applied, and we've been very diligent about going to the Homeland Security, and we've tried several times to get this grant. They freed up some money from a project that came in lower than bid, and I just want to thank Captain Steve Anderson from the Fire Department, because he did a lot of research on these heaters and the trailers to support them. We suggested that we get multiple trailers instead of one, so if we did need to dispatch these into multiple locations, we could put one here and move the other ones. These, this is a regional grant. These are regional heaters. They do not belong to the Town of Auburn, but they are in our keeping. So they'll be kept here and available to anyone in the Central Mass. Homeland Security region, and that was approved about two weeks ago.
So we don't need a?
No, no, that's just information to let you know that we got the grant and it's there.
Great. Thank you. Now, we have the Mass. Municipal Association Board of Directors Local Government Advisory Committee. Please.
Through the Chair, I just wanted to let the board know, and I did let you know through the email as well, but I'm happy to report that this, in January, I was appointed as the District Two Representative to the Mass. Municipal Association Board of Directors in Mass. through my involvement with the Mass. Municipal Managers Association, on which I'm on the executive committee. And by virtue of being on the Board of Directors of the MMA, I am automatically on the so-called the LGAC, which is the Local Government Advisory Commission. And that was actually established, I believe, in around 1970, under Mass. General Law, Chapter Three, Section 62, established this commission. And the members are, there are eight town managers, eight city councilors, and eight town councilors. Let me think, I'm sorry. Eight town managers, eight councilors, and eight Board of Selectmen from across the state that make up the MMA's portion of this LGAC. And then I believe there are a total of 30 members, so there'll be six other members that come from different affiliations with school associations. And the LGAC meets with the governor, and with the lieutenant governor, seven to eight times a year in the State House to talk about local issues that affect cities and towns. And the issues are identified through the process of the MMA. We, I've mentioned before, but we meet with the legislative delegation who are proposing legislation, talk to them about some of the legislation they proposed, if we have concerns about it. We've been able to, as a, as an organization, the MMA has been very successful in getting legislation either changed or passed, through their advocacy for it, if it benefits cities and towns. So this gives us a voice at the table with the governor on a regular basis to let him know what some of the issues are that Auburn and some of the surrounding communities in the district that I represent here are covered. So just wanted to let you know.
So just want to let you know, it's a good opportunity for the town. It's a voice, it's a local government's voice at the state level on a regular basis, and it's, I'm looking forward to it. I was sworn in two weeks ago by the governor, so that was exciting as well.
That's great. I think anything that comes up before them, even if we're not looking at it, it's something for down the road that could affect us at some point, so I think it's definitely a great thing for us to be a little bit on the inside to take a look and see where we are.
Through the chair, it is one of the agenda items for the first meeting I attended was to advocate for more Chapter 70 and Chapter 90 funds on a local basis.
Which affects us all.
It affects all of us, and that is truly for the Town of Auburn. If we could get to the level that we were at last year, we could get up to another $300,000 in Chapter 90 funds if that level that we're advocating for comes to bear. So it's an absolute direct impact on the town to have this type of voice.
Great.
So I thank you for your support, for allowing me to do this because I think it's really important for the town.
Absolutely. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have under 6E, the town meeting warrant article for registered marijuana dispensaries moratorium, and that's the approval by the Attorney General.
Yes, this is just, I believe we might have put the letter in your file when it first came in. Is it in the packet?
We have the February 2nd.
Okay, yes. So on February 2nd. So we put that in your boxes back then, but I wanted to just get in on the agenda so the public understood that. And Matt, who's the planner here, did a lot of work on it, so thank you, Matt. So at the town meeting in October, we had put on there a warrant article to put a one-year moratorium on so-called RMDs, which are registered marijuana dispensaries, while the planning board had the opportunity to come up with some stronger language to guide the sighting of those facilities. And we did receive word, as you see on February 2nd, from the Attorney General's office that that has been approved. The approval goes back under the law to the date of your town meeting vote. So the one-year clock started ticking on October 17, 2015. So this coming October 15, 2016 would be the end of the one-year moratorium. So we are working through the planning board to try to get a draft prepared to get to town meeting. Matt, are we aiming for May town meeting if possible? I don't think we're going to make the deadlines correct. Unfortunately, it's great that we got the approval from the Attorney General's office, but it came in late into the process, so to meet the requirements of planning board and other types of hearings that you have to hold to do something like this, there's not enough time to do the advertising, have the hearing, and do everything you need to have done to get it on the warrant for May town meeting. So we'll be aiming for the fall town meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay. We have no tabled items. We have no Board of Selectmen member items tonight. Any public comments? And then, oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman. Are we holding a meeting on Monday?
That's what's going to be our next question. I don't believe there's anything coming before us, so that we probably will not be having a meeting next Monday.
I believe that would be the 29th, the fifth Monday.
The fifth Monday. That'll be the, yep.
Okay.
So we will not be having a meeting on that. Is there anything else? Okay. I have, we have minutes in front of us from August 24, 2015. Again, I can't say thank you to Sharon enough for keeping the record. It's detailed, it's comprehensive, and spells out pretty much what that long meeting was. Again, Sharon, thank you very, very much for all your help with this. Is there any questions or comments, corrections, errors? If not, I'll accept them as presented, and also through the chair. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye, opposed? Good night, and thank you.